So, our public hearing for the Hammond City Council. Call to order, roll call please.
Councilman Kip Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Number one, a public hearing, uh, I'm sorry, public hearing number one. Introduction of an ordinance for an expanded conditional use requested by Marcella M. Cryer, applicant, to allow for a group care facility consisting of no more than eight individuals at Lot 1, Block 3, Sherry Drive Extension of College Town Subdivision located at 1208 West University Avenue, Zoned RM2. Recommended approval. Tracy Schulacy.
Good afternoon, Council. We're here to ask for adoption of this ordinance for an expanded conditional use to allow a group care facility at an existing residential home. It's actually in District 5's area, and our zoning commission recommended approval based on reasonable accommodations under the Fair Housing Act. And they also added a few conditions to meet all licensing for the state, fire marshal, the local building codes, et cetera.
Is it, it's a, a group living home is allowed under RM2? So, why?
It is not allowed in RM2. The, that's why they're asking for the expanded conditional use. That use begins in the RM3 district, and like I said, they recommend approval based on the fair housing regulations.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody here from the, anybody from the public here on this topic?
The actual business owner is here. If you have any questions for her, she's here.
Anyone have any questions? Steve?
Spoke to her at the planning meeting.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move into our regular session. Call to order, roll call please.
Councilman Kip Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
I'll ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer. Please rise.
My precious, loving, eternal heavenly Father, we just thank you right now. We just give you glory, honor, and praise as it do your name. Father, thank you for this day because this is the day that you made in renaissance, and we are glad about it. Father God, we just thank you for your darling son, Jesus, who died upon the promise that we too would have access to the tree of life. Now, Father, we just thank you for what you've always done. Let's continue to love with God us and keep us and protect us. We thank you in everything that we've done this evening, for we've done decent and all and pleasing in your sight. We will get all the glory and all the honor and all the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'll ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute for the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Reports, council reports? Anyone have anything? Mayor? Mayor report?
Uh, the swimming pool we met today with the architects is just about halfway finished. The granite, the infrastructure under the pool is in place. They're getting ready to start putting the final coat on the pool, and towels next. They pulled the footings for the building, so they're moving right along with that. There's a meeting today, our regional planning commission over at Southeastern at the alumni center for Louisiana Highway 3234, which is University. That is the ring around the, the loop around the city, which would connect University to the airport area. There's three options. One is Fagan Drive, Vineyard, I'm sorry, Vineyard. One is, is Woodscale Road and Pride Drive, which then would take it to Industrial Park. So, there's a meeting there right now. I think it'll be there till about 7:00 or 5:00, 6:30-ish, and that's my.
Thank you. Are there any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? We have adoption of the minutes kind of a motion for the minutes of February 26, 2019.
She'll move.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
We have resolutions, old business, none, new business. I'd like to move to amend the agenda tonight to introduce a budget change form regarding the canal improvements. So, I need a second to my motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Oh, I called it already. Councilman Wells.
Aye.
All right, so the first item will be the, the budget change form. Chuck Spangler.
You should have it in your hyperlink. This is what it looks like. We took bids Friday after the budget, the agenda closed out, and that's why I apologize. This was not on the agenda. We really did expect to go over budget. The bids came in about $65,000 over budget for a couple of different reasons. The primary reason is the JW Davis pedestrian bridge abutment has just about completely caved in, and that jacked up our prices considerably on that repair work. This is a combination of work at JW Davis pedestrian bridge, jacking the bridge back up, armoring the bank, and reconstructing the sidewalk that's cracked now from having, from all that washout that's happened at JW Davis and that bridge. The bridge is a $140,000 bridge. We're really, I, I recommend we move forward immediately because that's just a, gonna impact it. The mayor had that bridge put in two years ago, mayor, three years ago, and the canal's had all that high water in '16, and it just, just now damages just now showing up and getting worse. Second portion of that project is the slope paving of the Hazel Street Canal from Marsh Street South. This has been historically cleared by the Drainage District. However, number one, they will not pave the ditch to ditch, and number two, the Drainage District's jurisdiction ceases at Coleman. So, from Coleman to Marsh, that open canal is the city's canal, and we just, we just can't get to it. So, we're paving it. That was added right at the very last minute, last budget session. I underbudgeted it. I really didn't have time to do a good analysis at the time of what it would cost, and it was kind of dropped into budget. So, those two, both those two items are, were below budget expectations, and that is where I've come up with a $70,000, which is a little more than we need, but I'm just rounding it off. And the transfer is coming out of our Drainage 19 appropriation, none of which is under contract yet. We'll have that under contract in about six weeks, soon as we get a couple of rightaways. So, that's the explanation. It's a transfer of $70,000 from our not-yet-let contract on drainage improvements into the Canal Improvements 19 project to fully fund it and get it started. Hope I wasn't too wordy with that. Do y'all understand it?
Got it. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve?
I second that motion.
Next is down the line on this agenda, yes.
Okay. So, we just accept, we're just transferring money.
So, Councilman Steve Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Kip Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, we'll go to number one, which is really number two. A resolution to approve change order number one for the City of Hammond Park Restrooms Project Number 11808 for a decrease of $55,989 to the contract amount and the addition of seventy-one days to the contract period. Mark Beckers?
I'm gonna handle it.
You're not, Mark.
Hi, I'm Pierre Terrio with Holly and Smith Architects. So, this is a change order to increase the contract time by 71 days. As Carly mentioned, 31 days for weather and 40 days for a delay with getting the permit, which involved a delay in getting elevation certificates for the, for the sites. It's also, involves a credit delete, all of the work at Mooney Park, in the amount of $55,989.
Any questions? Motion? Motion on table?
Move to approve?
I second that motion.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
An appeal, wait, sorry. A resolution to transfer $55,989 from Hammond Park Restrooms Project 11808 to a new project for Mooney Park improvements. Councilman Wells.
Thank you. Ms. Lacy and I, we had met, and we talked about it, uh, what's going on. It was in the process of tearing the restroom down in Mooney Park. And the mayor and I, we had met about it, and what we doing, we working on, uh, with me and the city, we working on redoing the whole, the entire park. And so, what we gonna do? We gonna put the bathroom on hold, tear it down until a new designer come up with an idea on how we gonna do the park. So, that's what's, that was going on about Mooney Park.
Any questions?
And to clarify, this just removes the money from the other project that was dedicated to Mooney, but puts it in a special project to stay with Mooney, so that we're not moving that to another park. Thank you.
Will I make a motion to approve?
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
An appeal by, number three, an appeal by Spencer Rossi of the decision of the Hammond Historic District Commission denying his application for relocation of the properties at 207 West Morse Avenue and 211 West Morse Avenue. Spencer Rossi. This item is, at the request of the, of Mr. Rossi, has been requested to be tabled. Do we need a motion to table? To make a motion to table?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved to table.
Number four, a resolution to approve Hammond Harley-Davidson to obtain a waiver of the open container law to serve free beer on premises at its annual Bike Night on March 21st, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at 15:30 Southwest Row Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana. Jayden DeShanto?
DeShanto.
All right.
Um, so, I'm back, guys. I came back last time, and we got approval for it to be indoors, but I need the open container law waived so it can be outside. Insurance won't allow us to have it inside, and I did not know that at the time. But same things apply 21 and up. The wristband system, they get three beers a person. We will have bartenders that are not employees of Hammond Harley. They are contracted in. Actually met with them today. They understand the system and everything. And that's all I have.
Sounds good. Pleasure to the council?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Sam DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
A resolution to ratify and award bids for canal improvements fiscal year 2019. Jay Pittman or Chuck Spangler?
Bet you couldn't tell the difference. This, these bids were received Friday. You should have a, there's two sheets of paper hyperlink. It's called bid summary, and then it's a detailed bid tabulation. And if you look at what's on a bid tabulation, there's a base bid and an alternate. This is for the base bid only. We did have seven plan holders, four of which submitted bids. The low bid was Beverly Industries, who is thankfully the same contractor that is doing the Club Deluxe Road for the parish, and did some emergency work for the city on the 2nd Rose Hill Baptist Church anchor, canal work we did down there right by the bridge, if y'all remember. Oh, no, you weren't on the council, but last summer, we had, the bridge almost caved in, and we got some emergency. This is the same contractor that done exactly the same work, which is rock and flow fill intermixed, and it forms sort of a weave, and they pour flow fill. Flowable fill is just a real fluid or liquid concrete, and it flows into all the voids, and it creates a solid wall, and it can't be done, because it's so steep, you can't pour a flat slope like you might be used to seeing. So, this is type of work we're gonna do at JW Davis, same exact, or very close to the same type of work. Plus, we're gonna jack up and armor the abutment, which holds up the bridge, and then fill in under the bridge and rebuild the sidewalk. The other portion is we're gonna slope pave Hazel Street Canal from Marsh to Edwin Neil, clean the rest of it, and we're going to rock the wall on the east side of Edwin Neil. It's a very steep wall. If you looked at it, that first block by Tiffany Viall's office, if you know where to look. And that wall's not gonna be, we're not gonna dig that out because we take all the trees. So, we're gonna rock that wall, and we're gonna slope pave the other, pave the bottom, and there'll be no more problems with keeping it clean. As I mentioned, the Drainage District has told us, they've cleaned it three times in nine years, and they found that it's not in their district, so they don't want to clean it again. So, this will prevent anybody from having to worry about it down the road. So, these are the bids. I do recommend awarding to the low bidder, Beverly Industries, for the base bid, the amount of $372,765.
Pleasure to the council, or questions? Pleasure to the council?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Kip Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six, a resolution to approve the appointment of Edwin Bergeron as the police chief with an annual salary of $81,227, pay grade 242, Step 14. Mayor Panapinto?
As I stated before, Edwin Bergeron's been with the department for 19 years. He has a proven record of innovation and leadership. He's worked in nearly every department within the organization. He has worked with key task force, Customs, Homeland Security, Attorney General's Office, TBA, State Police, Narcotics, TPSO, and others. These other agencies have assets that the City of Hammond otherwise couldn't have access to, and they've been instrumental in helping us keep the streets safe over the years, and we appreciate that. He's worked, he's also has the ability to understand different perspectives and how to use people and, and resources effectively. His experience serving on Civil Service Board has prepared him to understand the disciplinary process. His communication degree in union leadership are also assets for public outreach and internal employee decisions. He's had several opportunities to leave the, the police force to go to other agencies and also to the Attorney General's Office as well. I would request that the council approve Edwin, so we can go forward and, and allow this gentleman to do a great job of sitting there.
Can I get a show of hands who intends on, on speaking on behalf of this tonight from the public? Just to engage time, we're gonna put time constraints. Okay. All right. We had a public input session last night. I recognize a lot of faces from last night, so that purpose of that was to hear some input. Obviously, we're gonna hear input and questions tonight, because this is a public forum. I would ask that your questions, whether they are about Sergeant Bergeron, they be directed to this council as what we, you ask us to know, or you ask us to consider in our, in our, in our vote. Please do not directly ask questions to Sergeant Bergeron. That was a choice last night, and if the mayor wants questions, that's up to him, but let's do this with dignity, dignity and respect for this chamber, please, as we did last night. It was a great job. So, I'll open it up to the floor.
How many minutes?
Let's do three. Since we did two last night, you get a little extra time. Give me just a second.
Okay, this is for questions only?
No, no, it's questions, comments, but I wanted to clarify, if there are questions, the questions should be directed to the council, and you can make statements, questions, comments, whatever. Give me just a second to do a stopwatch. All right. And please state your name, just like last night, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joseph Dominic. I reside at 811 West Morse Avenue in Hammond. I'm a lifelong resident. Hold a Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice from Southeastern. Also have a Master's in Public Administration from LSU. Kids, juvenile justice, and law enforcement have been my life's work. Basically, I'm a practitioner. I've been following the appointment of the Chief of Police, and Action 17 had a great article that came out, and it highlighted some of the things that Edwin's fellow officers said. They're also practitioners versus the personal agendas that we see on social media, the Monday morning quarterbacking. I think these are the people that we need to pay attention to, the practitioners. The office of the mayor and its administration are also practitioners. From a public administration standpoint, they have responsibility over all the departments in the city, including the PD, and is, and it is in the know for all facets of public safety, and rightly so this administration should be. This is not an election, it's an appointment. Support the appointment of Edwin Bergeron, I do, because he's almost a 20-year veteran. I've known and worked with Edwin throughout many of his capacities as a law enforcement officer. Edwin is forward-thinking and respected in doing so. Also, when he comes back to what my forte is, the youth of our community, he understands the need when it comes to that. For 2017 all the way through 2018, the Juvenile Detention Center, that's a regional center that provides detention services for the kids of our area, took in 1,378 kids. Of those 1,378 kids, 269 of them came from the City of Hammond. That's almost 20% of the kids placed in juvenile detention over the last two years for the entire area that we serve. That detention center serves about 3,700 square miles and a little over 500,000 citizens. That's an astonishing number for a City of Hammond. And when we have kids committing crime or accused of committing crime, that's where it all begins, as well as our communities. Edwin's familiar with the communities and the kids in those communities. That's what's important to me, and I support his appointment. Thank you.
Next.
Now, since it's good a time as any, five new council.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Arden Wells, 1260 East Pine Street, Punchett, Tula. Five new councilmen and a mayor who served a term before. This is the showdown on how the council will get along with Mayor Panapinto, and I submit to you that Mayor Panapinto has not been fair with the council in this procedure. There were 15 applicants. Rather than vetting the applicants and submitting, say, five names for the council to consider, he named one person. Not, not five, not three, not two. He named one person. Now, that person happens to be tainted, okay? He's tainted in many ways. He's been here 19 years, and he is only a sergeant. Now, there must be some reason why he has not been promoted higher than that in 19 years. Secondly, he was sued by the family of a young lady named Courtney Garza. She couldn't be here tonight because she's in the cemetery, but she left a suicide note, which was a form of dying declaration, that she had been strong-armed and intimidated by a member of the Hammond Police Department, Edwin Bergeron. If that's true, then he is a horrible person. If he says last night, "I was cleared, I took a lie detector test." There's no such thing as a lie detector. There are polygraphs and stress evaluators, but there's never been one that wasn't defeated. The courts will not allow that evidence in. We don't know what Edwin Bergeron did, but there's also a video that was sent to me in two pieces that I posted on social media. I didn't make it up, but Edwin Bergeron is shown in that video pounding a black man's face in with his fist. Over 5,000 people have seen it. 10 minutes ago, the Daily Star website posted that that was an incomplete video that, that the black man went for Edwin Bergeron's gun. I ask you, make the City of Hammond give you the entire video of that incident, and you look at it, and you tell me if Edwin Bergeron is guilty of police brutality. Tonight, you have to decide on a man who's got three sons working for the police department. Is this gonna be another dynasty in Hammond? Is this gonna be passed down from Edwin Bergeron to one of his sons? Even if it is an illegal, it's still nepotism, and nepotism is frowned upon because nepotism is about favoritism. But worse than that, you've got cronyism. You've got the mayor, who ran stray cats in Hammond, a barroom, who wants you to appoint his bouncer to be your next police chief. That's pretty sad, if you ask me. He was in business with Mayor Panapinto from 2010 until 2016, and he lied to you last night when he said that the.
Thank you.
He wasn't mayor.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I guess you won't give me 30 more seconds.
I will not, thank you.
Nah, I figured that.
That's why we set rules, you know? We're gonna go by those.
Hi, good afternoon. Sergeant Jennifer Payne, address 120 South Oak Street here in Hammond. I've been with the City of Hammond for 18 years, just shy of the time that Sergeant Bergeron has been here. The reason that we have been here so long and have only reached sergeant is because we have people that work for the department that have been here for as long as I've been alive. We have people in the upper echelon that are captains, assistant chiefs, that have been here for 30, over 30 years, 35 years. And I think that, like I said, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Edwin is the different choice that we can make tonight, or that you guys can make tonight. And I hope that you know how strongly we back him and how much respect he has within the police department. Just as a show of how many of us are here tonight, we had people drive from Baton Rouge, Covington, different places on their own time to come here and support him. But to answer your question, the reason that he's never been promoted higher than sergeant is because there's no room for advancement with people that are basically retired on duty. I hate to say that, use that term, but it's, it's true. I only made sergeant two years ago, which would have put me at almost 17 years of service before I was able to be promoted. I had the highest score on my civil service test. There's absolutely no reason I wouldn't have been promoted before then. As far as the allegations of any wrongdoing of Edwin's in regards to the unfortunate suicide incident that took place years ago, I'm sure some of you are aware that I was falsely accused of something also in 2014. I was actually put into jail by the then-police chief, so I do definitely have a vested interest in this. Obviously, I was found not to be at any type of fault. I was reinstated. I'm still here. He is not. Things happen, people are accused of things. I can accuse anybody in this room today of absolutely anything, and it doesn't mean that you've done it, but it is still a matter of public record. It is gonna taint your, for the rest of your life, if you look up Jennifer Payne, Hammond, Louisiana, the first thing you're gonna see is my mugshot. You can look it up, it's there. Did I do anything wrong? Absolutely not. Is that the first Google search result that my kids are gonna see whenever they look up my name for an ancestry project 10 years from now? Sure. It doesn't mean that I did anything wrong. Counsel, I just hope that you would take into consideration that we are the people that are gonna have to work for him every day, or be able to work for him every day. In additionally, this isn't a vote for someone else who could have taken the spot. This is just a backing on the mayor's decision to appoint this specific candidate. It's not a vote against him in favor of someone else. It's just a general agreement that we think that he would do a good job as.
Thank you.
Chief of Police. Thank you.
Anyone else?
First I say, good evening, councilmen and to the mayor. Doc Doska, Dancer Jr., President and CEO of the National Justice Organization for All People. We for better government, and we are for restricting our community. We gonna be out showing up now for better government, gonna be endorsing candidates, no matter what party nomination, who we feel gonna be the best candidate for all, for no matter if it's parish, city, or government, we gonna be out endorsing. We gonna be in the community doing voter registration drives, to try to move the city of Hammond or this parish to a better future. Now, I'd like to say to the council, I have nothing against Officer Bergeron. I work with him. The application process, I don't think it was fair. It was misleading. Why would you have an application process, public eye, asking, in the virtue, other word, acquired, to be looked at, when the mayor already had handpicked one candidate? If you had 15 candidates, and I think everyone in here can vouch, I think that the council should have been able to evaluate all 15 applicants, not just who the mayor handpicked. Now, I'm here a taxpayer, and still, the real concern are the taxpayer wasting dollars. DeVault was a waste of money, stood in the fight suit, in my opinion, as being law enforcement, and knowing the law, that it's also gonna be a waste of money because of DeVault versus city of Hammond, it became a lawmaking decision, and attorney can address that as a lawmaking decision that they gonna rule on. And. a lawmaking decision that they gonna rule on. And now, if this taxpayer's money started being wasted, if Officer Bergeron is hired, is appointed, six months to a year, if he do something wrong, is the mayor gonna fire him, and there go another lawsuit? So we need to think about it. I'm asking the all citizens tonight, councilmen, I'm urging you all to take a look at this thing, and table this, and place it on the agenda to be voted on, and let the taxpayers be able to vote to let it become elected position, then your taxpayer dollar would not be wasted, it would be answered to the taxpayer and the hard-earned citizens. That mean, you all have the power. Five new visions-
15.
Let's move the city of Hammond into a better future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Officer Darren Johnson, 120 South Oak Street. Been an officer here for 12 years. I've had the pleasure of working with Edwin. You're not gonna find a more dedicated person to the job. I'll just use an example, he was on vacation with his family in Florida, and he's emailing us information while we working about something that was going on. His phone's always ringing, and my phone ring happy that much, I throw it in the mow or something. But you're not gonna find a more dedicated person. He listens, he takes in ideas. I think he boosted morale of this department very much. That's why we need a new chief with great leadership. I think he's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Christine Monastery, 208 Camelia Avenue, Hammond. I don't know this man, I don't have anything against this man. I don't want to reiterate the Garza case, however, I think that the appointment of Bergeron would send forth an awful message to any potential families that would want to send their children here, especially young girls, in spite of his innocence or guilt. The stigma's there, it remains. Then there's this video. I'm not really concerned about seeing the entire video, I don't care what happened before, or what happened after. What I'm concerned about is this is a trained professional, 19 years on the force, and you have no better self-control than that, than to beat a man? I can't stand for that. That is not what Hammond's about. I've been here 50 years. We have two lawsuits against the Hammond PD. One our mayor appointed and fired, and that's what's gonna happen here too. Two chiefs of police have been fired under his watch, and two lawsuits have resulted. I urge you to not appoint this man. I don't think this is a good fit. That's it.
Thank you. Next.
Corey Morse with Hammond Police Department, 120 South Oak Street. I've been working here for about nine years. I've been knowing Edwin for roughly those nine years as well. He's a great guy, a great leader, a great worker. We're talking about an incident that happened in December of two years ago, where he's already been cleared internally and through other agencies. Quick story about Edwin. Edwin actually started what we call the Operation Prepossessive, Operation whatever. It was a task force based off of several agencies, including ourselves, TPSO, Homeland Security, ATF, probation and parole, list goes on and on. During that, it was a week-long task force. We arrested several, several, several violent criminals, and Edwin was there with us the entire time. He's an entire, he's a hard worker. Anytime we had any questions or asked anything, he was there to help us out with everything. One of my roles at Hammond PD is also a SWAT team leader, and on behalf of the SWAT team, all 16 guys are here, we all would be honored to work for Edwin. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Corrections Officer Xavier Ramirez, 45077, Robert, Louisiana. I've only been with this department for about two years, and within those two years, I've learned a great deal from Edwin Bergeron. A lot of the younger, less vetted officers like myself look up to him, because he has great leadership qualities, and I can see that going far in the chief's position. He does a lot, more than he probably should, more, definitely more than he gets paid to. And I'd like to double down on what I said yesterday, and please for y'all to move this forward, so we can have a good chief who's already has, you know, rapport with all the officers in this department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I am Mr. Mayor, Anthony Renata, 600 East Robert Street. Proud resident of Hammond for the last 20 years. I'm not here to political grandstand. I am a resident, unlike some other people here of Hammond, and crime is of most importance. I come from a family of servants. My father was actually a police chief, and my mother was an elected councilwoman for eight years as well too. She's an educator. I serve as a public servant myself for the university. I'm an at-will employee, and this position has an at-will employee as well too. And I understand there's been a lot of controversy surrounding the position, but the mayor, and everything followed, seems to be that it is following in compliance with the guidelines as listed, from my knowledge. Now, should the council decide to do otherwise, that is your choice, but you have been slated a candidate from the managing, directing hire for the position, who is duly qualified for that position, and who is trusted and led by his peers. I know there are a number of people here tonight who probably can't speak, who were either impacted on many of sides of civil service or other reasons, but I know many people here are tonight to support Edwin. So if those of you who are in attendance would please raise your hand and show that you are in support of Edwin, it gives you an idea of the number of people here that may not speak, that are here for him, because we know that he will do the best thing to lead this city, and to lead a force that is committed to keeping the Hammond safe. And that's why we're all here, and that's why you chose to serve. And I ask you to reach inside and stand with him on the right decision to move the city forward in keeping our streets safe and keeping our neighborhoods solid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name's Officer Ryan Bergeron with the Hammond Police Department, 120 South Oak. Yes, I'm one of his stepchildren that he adopted. Been listening to a lot, judging his character, and just to give y'all a little bit of background, Edwin at a young age came into my life, I was probably around 10. He met a single mother of two children, and didn't have anything to gain financially, didn't have anything to gain with power. He took on a mother with two children and gave them a steady, a solid roof over their head. He took on a nephew, done the same thing for him, that didn't have much more than a backpack with clothes, and gave, provided a good future for him. Been, last night, a gentleman said, choose somebody that has the right intentions for this community. And first thing that came to my mind, which a lot of you probably don't know until Mr. Mayor said something about it earlier, Edwin has had multiple opportunities to leave Hammond PD prior to this position opening, to take on a leadership role in a chief's position. But his exact words to me is, "I love Hammond PD, I love this community." And he turned down those positions to better this place, to better this community. So, we're judging his character, but he has proven many times that he's wanting to stay here to better this place. A lot of rumors have been said that he shows favoritism. You can ask any of the guys, since I've been in street crimes, has there any, has there been any display of favoritism? And they can vouch for me. You know, it's insane that, how rumors spread, and people automatically assume that he's guilty of something, or because someone is, or a rumor spread that he's tainted, so we can't move forward. And I just don't understand that. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Javon Spears, 16124 West Mary Road. I'm a resident of Hammond, I've been here for a long time. I worked under Sergeant Bergeron for several years before I left and went to state police. You talk about a man who supports this community, to this day, I still get phone calls from people in the community that I grew up in having problems, and they asking for Edwin's Bergeron phone number. You know, everybody know that I don't work for Hammond PD no more. They love to see Edwin. He's the only guy that I know that can go into the neighborhood, onto Mooney or somewhere, and sit at a dinner table and have a conversation with the whole family, and it's quite all right. I was in a shooting last year. He had the resources to catch the shooters. It wasn't administration who did, who brought him to justice, it was Edwin Bergeron. We had helicopters in there under 15 minutes, you know? That's the only guy I know, he called my family from a helicopter. He had my mother on the phone from, and letting her know that I was okay. Administration didn't do that, Sergeant Bergeron did that, and I got respect for him. He never once doubted me, never once got mad at me for leaving. He knew I wanted to better myself as a young officer. My lifelong dream was state police. He knew that from the get-go. When I worked under him, he pushed me to the max, you know? So, I support him. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sergeant Thaggetier, I'm with the Hammond Police Department. My address is 46506 Pine Hill Court. I had the blessing, or curse, however you wanna put it, to work with Edwin for the last two or three years. At, you know, speed dial away, and he doesn't sleep, he'll call you at 6:00 or call you at 3:00 AM with ideas. A couple of things we had touched on earlier, a lot of his ideas, I don't think the public really knows the type of work he's done in street crimes, the type of crimes he solved, the type of things that he's done. I know the Operation Resolution was talked about earlier, that was something he culminated with several federal, state, and local partners. All of them, by the way, are here to support him in the back. Not only has he done that, he's also worked on several other operations with the ATF, which netted over, by my count, somewhere between 75 and 80 guns we took off the street in street crimes. He's also brought into court a human trafficking case. He's assisted in a undercover purchase of methamphetamine by a cartel member in Hammond, Louisiana, that was trying to move in here and sell drugs. These are all the things that he has culminated and put together with those partners. That shows a lot of his good work. The nepotism, I can tell you 100%, like I said, I've worked with him over the last two years, I've worked with Craig and Ryan. If anything, I've seen him hold them to a higher standard than he has everyone else. I joked about it and said, you know, at least I get to go home at night and don't have to listen to it where they have to hear it 24/7, because he does have a higher expectation for his relatives, no doubt about it. The video that was released, or I'm sorry, the videos, which are cut and pasted, I can only say that I was there for that incident, there's one solid video, it shows a whole lot. It was investigated by the FBI as a civil rights violation, and all members were found to be clear of that. I can tell you that I put my safety in Edwin, I can tell you that my family trusts Edwin to have my safety in mind, my mother trusts him to have his safety in mind, and I believe you guys should too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ronald Valentine, 190130 Covington Highway, Hammond, Louisiana. I don't know Edwin Bergeron, but what I do know is I'm a resident of Hammond, and a couple of years ago, I'm a former counselor from Southeastern Louisiana University, and I'm also a licensed and ordained minister, former pastor. I was harassed by the Hammond Police Department just a couple of years ago. And it was noted, it was, the question was asked, was I a drug dealer? I'm a minister, I'm licensed, I'm ordained, pastor church, gave my life, 18 years, working as a counselor at Southeastern. But I'm disturbed by the video that I saw, whether it was cut and pasted, or whatever. The video is real, and to see a man being beaten, handcuffed, I have a problem with that. The scripture says, "Don't let your good be evil spoken of." Thank you, council.
How y'all doing? Janice Carter Beard, 806 Natural Street, Hammond, Louisiana. Okay, I got some things to say. I don't think that Officer Bergeron is right for the city of Hammond, not just for the video of kicking and beating a handcuffed man, but I got on videotape him being responsible for certain drug dealers in my neighborhood. And then, when you try to get him arrested, I ended up on TV behind that. When you try to get him arrested, they tell me, "Oh, he's a confidential informer." But he can come through there pulling guns, shooting, and doing whatever. But when you try to call the police, they won't even, I done had eight counts against that man, and never have we gone to court. Not only that, I do remember, wasn't he the one in charge of our SWAT team? And then I asked him about the diversity on the SWAT team, and he said, "Oh, we had one black person, but he's no longer with us." And he was the one in charge of deciding who get to be on the SWAT team. Now, we don't need nobody that already is known to be somebody that'll kick and beat somebody while they already subdued. We do not want to put Hammond under that kind of pressure. Now, I voted against that bear cat, they got that bear cat, I don't want to see a role in my neighborhood during, this is not Ferguson, and we're not gonna let it be Ferguson. And we do not want him in office over the city, or the people of Hammond. I come up here to let y'all know, he is not the right type of person. We need somebody with an even temperament, not somebody that gonna beat and kick somebody while they down on the ground, already handcuffed. So, I'm immensely against this, I'm gonna campaign against this, and I'm gonna do whatever it take to make sure that we need to get somebody better than that in this office. I understand. If you can't put somebody in there that's gonna be fair to everybody, don't put him in there.
My name's Athena Thompson, 4848 Midway Road, Tickfaw. I would just like to say to the city of Hammond, to the people that are here that have cast stones at Mr. Bergeron, that-
I'm casting boulders, baby.
In the video that was brought up, unless you're there in a police officer's position to know what's going on at that moment in time, you can't speculate from things that you're, that are seen.
I'm sorry, there's no comment, please, while the people are talking. Give her the respect that you received.
I want the city of Hammond to know that I trust Mr. Bergeron with all six of my girls. They could be at his house with his wife and his family, they could, he is, I don't know if any of you guys know, but this man puts on a daddy-daughter dance every year because he loves his family, because he loves this community, and he wants to bring it together, and he wants fathers and daughters to have a relationship and to grow together and to have that bond. Mr. Bergeron is the best candidate for the chief. Thank you.
I would just ask that, so this doesn't go on for too long, if there's something new that someone wants to bring to the table, that would be appreciated. If it's something that's already been discussed or raised, you know, you could just come forward and say, "I agree with whatever was said." Just to kind of move things along, please.
My name's Corey Hammond, 120 South Oak Street. I started with Hammond Police Department short of time ago, 2018, of April. I have not known Sergeant Bergeron for a long time, but what I do know is I have a lot of respect for the man. Not for his rank, but his personal character will be. When I started, I was in corrections. No matter what the criminal came in for, I've always saw him talk to the same person the same way. No matter if they were a drug dealer, no matter if they were an alleged serious offender. I've seen him talk to the same admiration and care as he has civilians and other officers, administration alike. I have never seen him show any form of aggression or hostility towards any person. Yes, they have had a lot of situations where- Yes, they have had a lot of situations where that person showed hostility, but he always kept a calm and clear head. Always respectful. I have a lot of admiration, that's all I had to say, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, anyone else going once?
No rebuttal, I suppose.
No rebuttal.
No.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Wayne Savick, 120 South Oak Street. I guess I'm what you consider one of the old guys around here, I've been twenty-seven years here, pretty much worked in every department here also, like Edwin. He works for me now. I am over the street crimes division and narcotics division in the SRTD. He's the kind of guy that, if I have an issue, I need something taken care of, the mayor calls, Lacy calls, anyone calls, they need something done in the neighborhood, I call Edwin, he handles it. Don't have no issues, I've never had any disciplinary problems with him. I'm behind him a hundred percent, I don't want to stand up here a long time and tell you the same thing everybody else has said, but I think he'd make a great chief, I'd be glad to work for him any day. That's pretty much all I got to say, brother, we love you, and we stand behind you.
All right. I'm gonna close public comment, unless you have something new to say. All right. Council want to make some comments?
I want to make a statement. I know it might be hard on everybody, whether you like him or not. I stay on Mooney Avenue, I don't know everything going on. The video, we all saw it. You all got your opinion, but I will say this here, for all you officers, I don't even know the names or what division y'all in or what y'all do. I've been in Hammond all my life, and from what y'all say, I'm understanding what y'all said, was it good or bad? I don't know. I know this guy from seeing him and from him dealing with me and working around me and being in the community. At this time, I can say this here, let's put all this aside, what's going on, was it Stewart or Deval? I don't care who it is, but all you officers that stood up, I would like to see y'all in the community, just like y'all here now, and come and just talk to the community and let them know that we gonna move forward and we gonna make Hammond better. And we ain't gonna just stand in front of the city councilman, we gonna do it in the black community as well as the white community. Don't come there fighting, don't come there fussing, just come there to listen. At this time, I will approve of Edwin.
Any other comments?
I wanted to just address one issue which was raised about the fact of the rape intimidation allegations in the Garza suit. So as an attorney, as a woman, as a mother, it is something that I looked into and read all of the information that was given, including the suicide note. And there is a, you know, a false statement that he is named in the suicide note, and as that is his proof of his guilt in doing something wrong, that is, I want to make clear for the record that that is not true. He's not named in the suicide note. He was very much vetted in that civil litigation, and I don't take it lightly that, as a woman, that that's an issue. And I believe I've done my due diligence in investigating that topic, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Anyone else? Pleasure of the council. I'm sorry, Edwin, do you have anything to say? Probably a good idea just to let it go? All right, but I want to give you the chance. All right, pleasure of the council.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
A second.
Councilman Devon Wells?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Steve Leon?
Yes.
Councilman Sam Diviterio?
Yes.
Councilman Kip Andrews?
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you, we have other things to address here. Final adoption of an ordinance, number one, a final adoption of an ordinance for an expanded... Please silence in the chambers. Final adoption of an ordinance for an expanded conditional use request by Marcella M. Pryor. Ms. Janice, you as a councilperson should give us the respect that you receive. Please be quiet.
You should give me the respect by not putting somebody that'll beat the hell out of me for no reason while I'm tied, while I'm handcuffed and on the ground. And you should give me the respect.
Ms. Janice.
As I try to get the drug dealers out of my neighborhood, you should, I should have the respect to get them out of my neighborhood.
Get it done.
Yes, I am done.
A final adoption of an ordinance for an expanded conditional use request by Marcella M. Pryor to allow for a group care facility consisting of no more than eight individuals at Lot 1, Block 3, Sherry Drive, extension of College Town subdivision located at 1208 West University. Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve?
I second it. I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number, I'm sorry, introduction of ordinance in set for public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance for a rezoning request by Plantation Management Company LLC to rezone Block 10 of the Barber Edition located at 800 South Oak Street in accordance with the survey of RJ Tatum, or R. James Tatum dated 1/22/1998 from RM 2 to CN. Recommended approval by zoning commission. Tracy Schalace.
I am here to ask for introduction to an ordinance to be set for the next public hearing. This is an existing nursing home that's on South Oak Street. This business is being purchased by another business, and it's brought to our attention that this zoning doesn't conform with the existing use, so we're asking for that existing use to conform with our zoning.
Motion to introduce.
I make a motion that we introduce.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
I second.
She's second. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved, and public hearing is set for March 26, 2019.
Thank you.
Number two, an introduction of an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all the taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2019. Jenny Wilson. Do I need to read the issue referred to the agenda? Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. I'm asking for an introduction of an ordinance to adopt the established tax. This is, by law, we have to adopt it, the council has to adopt it each year, even though it's gone before voters, we have to set it and adopt it, so I'm asking for an introduction for the next meeting to adopt.
Make a motion to introduce.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
All in favor of to be adjourned?
Aye.